This is a meeting of the Southwood Public Library Board of Trustees. It is October 12th. Somebody wants to follow the meeting order?
Okay, and I'm Michael McMahon. We have Maria Gao. We have Cindy Warner.
Cindy Warner.
Tracy Meswier.
Tammy Sykes Fassilla.
Okay, and we'll start the meeting off. I don't see any members in the public, in terms of public comments, unless they're on Zoom. Is there anyone on Zoom?
Nope, just them.
Okay.
So communications, I gave everybody a copy of the survey responses. So last time we mentioned that we got the grant for the LSTA. And just as kind of a part of the area to the grant, it officially started October 1st. But for the last couple of weeks of September, I wanted to put something out there just to get some feedback from people on what types of programs they would like to see, what types of resources. So the first packet with all the borrowers at the top is the survey we sent out to residents. So we asked what types of programs they wanted to see, what types of resources they weren't aware of that we provide so we can get an idea of of what, you know, we could better market that people aren't aware of. And we asked them if there was anything that, you know, they, specifically any events or anything that they wanted to see. And I also asked if they'd like to be added to our email list. So that way, if there's some interest in the programs that we're going to be offering through the grant, that we could stay in touch with them. So we got 11 responses, and I used this to kind of get us going for some ideas to start the grant off. And the other one we sent, I sent out to, I tried to send it out to all the businesses in Southwood. But as, as Mike mentioned, after I sent them all out, some places on College Highway don't have a mailbox. So I got a lot sent back. So in those events, I tried to email the business to see if we could, you know, get it to them that way. And now we don't need to get one response, but at least that way, hopefully, they received it. I know it's a busy time to try to get businesses, everybody's still rebounding from the pandemic. So just to get some feedback from, from them as well. And also, one of the main questions we wanted to see was if anybody would be interested in collaborating on it with us. So even if they didn't respond, hopefully, you know, they saw it and could always lead to something in the future. And so if nobody has any questions on that, next I will mention the 250th parade. So Tracy, we can count you and Dave?
Yes, okay.
And Dave, I didn't know if anybody else was interested in walking with us in the parade. Now, that's right. Yeah, we have a couple of staff people, and I'm going to mention it to the friends tomorrow night to see if there's anybody who would.
I'll walk with you.
Okay.
Because I think you have enough on the cultural council.
We're dressing up as your favorite book character.
Okay.
You don't have to dress up if you don't want to.
That's fine, I don't mind.
Yeah, so, so we're going to be walking, and we have little bags. Thanks to Tracy for donating a lot of stuff. We have like 100 bags of stuff to hand out on the parade route to her.
How are we going to carry them now?
I was thinking, they're very light, so if we split them up between a couple of us and just have like, I was thinking, I was going to try to bring in some messenger bags, or like, you know, those hand this Walmart bags or Big Y bags. Just load them up and just hand them out. They're, they're actually not that heavy, and I think if we spread them out between enough people, it won't be so bad. So we printed out a bookmark to go in it, and we have an assortment of little fidget spinners and kind of things we bought for, for that. And we did get a banner made, so we have a very nice banner, thanks to Southwoods. They designed a really nice banner for us. So now I just have to buy an eight-foot dowel to put in it. That's going to be an interesting project. So yeah, so Tracy, Dave, and Cindy. And it sounds like we're lining up, I think they want us lined up by noon at the DPW. But I'm just going to take everybody's names down, and I'll send out an email once I confirm the details for sure. I think if they want us lined up by noon, I don't, I don't think we need to get there too, too early because we don't have like a float or anything. It's just, it's just us in our costumes, so it should be really low maintenance.
Zoom your costumes and your feet.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Comfy shoes.
Comfy shoes, comfy shoes. I think somebody put it on, on a MapQuest or something, and it's like from the DPW to the town center. It's 20, 25 minutes or so walking, I think.
It'll take at least that though, because crates are slow.
It's to Town Hall. Yeah, and I think then they're going to be busing us back or something. It sounded like there was some type of transportation back, so we wouldn't have to walk both ways. But I'll, I'll confirm the details. I got you guys on a list, and once I know for sure, then we'll, we'll touch base.
Okay, and this is Saturday?
Do you be giving out just the goods down here at Town Hall?
We'll just be giving them out as we walk. Like if there's, if there's kids or something standing alongside, then we'll, we'll give them out. And if there's anything extra, then we'll just save it for the trunk or treat, which we're doing on October 30th. I don't know where they're doing it yet. They were going to do it at Wally Park, I don't know if they're still doing it there. But yeah, we will have a unicorn car. And yes, and then we've got a bunch of candy for that, and I think we're all set on candy for now. So we will stock up and get ready to go. So that's kind of what we have on deck. And if there's no questions on that, I sent you guys, so we don't have the meeting minutes from Jen. But I did send, I did give you a copy of the meeting minutes from the special meeting in September. That was Cindy's interview. Very brief.
She did great, too.
Yeah.
For a mute.
They make a motion to accept the minutes of the special meeting?
And that was Tracy?
All those in favor? Hi. It was unanimous.
Alright, so I guess we'll save the other meeting, our meeting minutes for next time around. And then the director's report I have for September. So as you can see, our numbers are really bouncing back up there. We have been extra busy lately as of, I think Agawam closed the beginning of September, so we've been getting a lot of Agawam's patrons. They're foreseeing being closed to the end of the year, maybe into January. And, but the good news is, is a lot of Agawam patrons have been here. So I think we're creating a lot of, you know, reguity customers.
Goodwill as well, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so.
My brother being one of theirs.
Nice.
Yeah, so we, we've seen a lot of that, and it's definitely getting, getting busier.
Why isn't Agawam closed?
No.
It's what I was having, the leaky roof, so we're going to fix it at the same time. We're doing several different projects.
It's just one, one bad thing on top of another. And then back in September, we had 17 patrons, which was fantastic. So we've gotten, we've gotten quite a lot of new patrons this year. In July, we had 25, August, we had 20, left, September, we had 17. So we've, we've seen a good jump in, in patron card numbers. And the curbside has gone way down, which is good, that means people are coming inside. Some people still prefer to pick up outside, so we'll just do that until there's no demand anymore. Any questions? So old business, we just covered, I discovered earlier, the surveys for the LSTA grants. Now that it's officially begun and the funds have been received by the framework, we are beginning to get some events on our calendar. So based on what people wanted in the survey, and what I've talked to people about, we're doing, in November, we're doing an event on LinkedIn and how to use it. And then in December, we are doing a presentation on networking. And the presenter was recommended to me, he's not based from here, he's based in Eastern Mass. So we're going to do both of those on Zoom. But from what I understand from talking to a lot of people, you know, the type of people that might be interested in this event, they really enjoy the Zoom because they can come home from work and have their dinner and not have to go back out again. So it's actually been really good having some of these things on Zoom. It's much more convenient for a lot of people. So those two we've got set so far. Heather, our teen librarian, and I are trying to figure out something we can do for the teens as far as mentorship. We're seeing if there's ways we can connect with different local organizations to have the teens maybe shadow somebody or if there's a way we can get them involved in that. But that's just in the early beginnings.
Just so I can, I can like, is there a way to record them so I can show my group?
I can try to, yeah, as long as, as long as our presenter is okay with it, then yes. And I was going to reach out to, to you and Sandy about some events soon, so that's on my to-do list.
We would actually, our Westfield site is open, so it's me.
Oh, is you? Okay, well, that's helpful then, yeah. So maybe, maybe we can touch base at some point and, because I've been meaning to reach out to you and see what we can kind of do as far as events, like if you had any ideas or if there's anything we could do specifically for your customers, your patrons. But yeah, we'll, we'll talk about that.
Last thing off the top of my head, like getting like your first job.
Yeah.
Might be good for the teens as well.
Yeah, and that's, Heather's looking into, I know with the grant, we're, we're specifically hoping to do like two to three events specifically for teens. So if the mentorship is one, then like getting your first job and.
Balancing a checkbook.
Counting change.
I don't do that anymore. That's what I hear when I try. Good for you.
Yeah, so we, we've got those advanced plans so far. And then soon I will start looking into getting the barriers ordered to kind of, so we can create the small study spaces. We're also ordering a portion of the books for the business section as well, because some of them are getting pretty outdated. And, and yeah, and then we're just going to keep coming up with a calendar of events all through October of next year. So busy, busy. And then to update everybody on Climate Week, so that was week of September 24th. And we worked with other Massachusetts and Connecticut libraries, and it seemed to go really well. I think one of the, the most attended events was actually our hawk watch, which was fun. Didn't see many hawks, saw a moose. Yes, he wasn't close. Yes, he was over on like a couple hills away, so he was kind of just like a brown blob, but it was still a moose, and they were still very excited.
Oh my God, I'd be so excited.
We had 25 people for that, which was fantastic. And it was our first time actually doing like an off-site event. So it was a good learning experience on things to do and not to do, so. But I, but it, it opens doors for potentially doing something like that in the future, so. And we also have the Western Mass Hilltown Hikers here for a program, which technically didn't make it into Climate Week because they couldn't make it that week, so they went a week before. But we still had a full house in here. First really big program since the pandemic, and everybody liked it and enjoyed it. So I think overall, it went really well. And it was nice to be able to collab with other libraries, so it's not just us doing everything. It was a good mix of everything. But yeah, overall, I was, I was happy with it, happy with the response. So we'll probably try to do something next year as well. And then as for new business, we have, as you may have seen, we have the children's librarian position posted again. Riley, who started the middle of July, unfortunately had to leave because the hours no longer fit her schedule. And unfortunately, with the way the schedule is, I could only move around so much. It was the times that I really needed somebody for, that were the times that she just couldn't do. So unfortunately, she, she did give her notice, which is too bad, because she, she and Molly made a great team in there. I don't know if any of you met Riley, but she was very good, very energetic, had a lot of great ideas. So we're glad to see her go, but the position is, has been posted almost two and a half weeks now.
Yeah, crucial.
Nothing. And then I posted everywhere that I can think of, it's, it's in all the library boards, it's in the paper, it's online, I even put it on Facebook.
We don't take it personal.
I know, but it hurts at the same time. It's, it's too bad, and I'm, I'm sending something over to Westfield State University because they said they'll post it for their staff there as well. Because I mean, it's, it's a good job for a student, I think, you know, it's in the evenings, I mean.
It's just for the community.
Yeah, it's just, it's tough because, yeah, nothing. That's the way it's going everywhere, so. Which also leads us into our other new business, the evening staffing level, especially since we've lost Riley. It's, and it's been apparent before that we have three people in here in the evening. We have Paul, we have Susan at the desk, and we have somebody in children's. And when I did write our minimum staffing policy, I said that we need to have two people in here up front to open the doors. But with the way things have been going, and we're just, just being busier than normal, especially with Agawam patrons, especially now that we're back to doing events, especially in the evening when we've been doing events, like to have one person at the circulation desk when we were doing, you know, the hiking program, when there's 30 people in here, it's too much for one person. And what's rough is that, you know, whatever, like without Riley now, we're trying to find people to cover that third shift. And what's, what I've been found that's happening is, it's just people, people are busy, you know, I can't, other staff, I've been trying to move around. But I really do think that we could definitely use another person in the evening. Because what's been happening is that when I can't find anybody, it's, it's me staying. So like one week, two weeks ago, I was here from nine in the morning till eight at night, three days in a row, and it's just, it's difficult. And it's, it's getting to be a lot, so. And it's whenever we have a sit call with one of our evening staff at night, and then there's only two people, then usually I'm, end up staying last minute, which just, it, it makes things difficult trying to schedule, and it's, it's tough. Especially now that, now that we're short that person at night, so we're trying to figure, and people have been really great here about filling in and helping cover shifts. But, you know, people have lives too, and they can't cover everything.
Including you.
Including me, and I know, and it's, and it's really pulling me away from my life, you know. I mean, I, I love it here, I don't, I don't mind helping out, but doing nine in the morning till eight at night several days in a row is, is a lot. So I'm not trying to get anything moving now, I just kind of want to put, put the idea out there that we could potentially use another person at night. Even if it's just Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday for a couple hours, then, you know, maybe that would be something for, to consider for the future.
And this would be in addition to Riley's replacement?
Yes, yes, yeah. Because that way, if we have four people scheduled and somebody calls out, then we have three people, and we can still function. But you know, now as we have three people and somebody calls out and we have two people, you know, I, I can't really do that to our staff. You just have two people here by themselves at night. If there's a program or something going on, then it's just a lot to do, so. I just, I just wanted to mention it just to get the idea in people's heads, you know, I don't know if, if it'll ever happen, but it would, it would potentially be extremely helpful.
What are you going to do in the meantime?
Muddle through as best we can. Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, like I said, basically, people are really good about helping to step in and cover. You know, some of our staff are working in the morning and then coming back and doing a couple hours at night.
I mean, I know it's potentially probably easier to get volunteers in the daytime, but.
Yes.
Could it be something where volunteers help out in the evening, etc.?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not opposed to volunteers helping out. We don't have any volunteers that actually do like the circulation duties is the thing. And when you get into that, the, the last library I worked at, we relied heavily on volunteers that did all the circulation duties. But what's tough with volunteers as compared to employees, you know, a volunteer can just be like, I'm not coming in tonight, you know. Whereas an employee, you're obligated to come in unless, you know, you're sick or something. But when you rely heavily on volunteer support like that, it makes things even worse sometimes because it's so unpredictable, you know. They can just be like, well, I'm not getting paid, I'm not showing up, or I'm not coming in, and so you're relying on something that isn't very reliable. And that's the issue that I ran into a little bit before, which wasn't to say they weren't great, fantastic, but it's just, it's just difficult because they can call out, it's not even really calling out. They can just call like an hour before they're supposed to be here and say, I didn't make it in, and there's nothing I could do about that. So I just wanted to put the idea out there, just that it, you know, I don't, I don't think we need to, I don't, I don't know, I don't think we'll be able to get approved for another 18-hour position. But even if it was something as simple as like a 10-hour position or something, three nights a week, then, then that could be helpful.
Yeah, you could maybe get someone who's retired and just looking.
Retired, or even, you know, potentially a high school student, you know. As long as, I think their, their deadline is they can't work later than like eight or nine or something like that, I'd, I'd have to look. But um, yeah, even if they did like five to eight or four to eight, a couple nights a week, then, you know, that's, that's something.
That's something you can think about next month when you're developing a budget.
Yes, that's what I wanted to throw out there. I mean, I don't, even if it's like 10 hours a week, that's, it's not a huge amount, but it would be very helpful. Because I'm just afraid of asking all our staff to keep covering and covering, and they're going to get burnt out, and I'm going to get burnt out. And then everybody's going to be burnt out, and, you know, I don't, I don't want to do that, you know. I was just throwing that idea out there, just so that, you know.
Because at Town Hall, they're doing some dribbling of staff in between parks and rec, and the senior center. They've done some experimenting in the last month or so, adding hours to somebody and having them there.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know if, and I, I don't know if they'd want to add hours to one of our part timers already because that, then that would bump them above that 18 hours, so it might be easier to ask for an additional person as opposed to making somebody 24, 25 hours. Yeah, so, so I'll look at that when we're doing the budget, but I just wanted to, to say. And then we have our new circulation staff member, his name is John Short, and this is his third week. And he also works at the Granville Library, so he's starting here, pretty familiar with all of our computer systems and everything, so it seems to be going good. And then I did give everybody a copy, and I think I emailed this to everybody as well, the action plan. Yes, you could kind of take a look through it, so I can submit it. And yeah, a lot of it, a lot of what we added was stuff to do with the LSTA grant. Molly added a lot of stuff for the children's room. Yeah, she, she's looking to do, that she wants to start doing baby welcome bags and things like that. So we have a bunch of different goals and.
So this is for fiscal year starting next January, first?
Technically, it's for fiscal year, the way they run this is framed, it's fiscal year '22 to '23. So it, it kind of began this year and running to next year, but they have to submit it during the middle of the year.
I saw '23 up here.
Yeah, yeah, so we have to submit this every year in order to be considered for different grants. If anybody has any questions or comments, if not, I will submit this to the MBLC for approval. One of the newer things we're working on here is I'm going to be working with Heather, our assistant director, on coming up with some kind of new welcome packet for Southwood residents to try to, to get them to, you know, I think we're going to be getting a lot of new people in town with the housing developments, so ways to kind of reach out to them. It's nice when new residents come here without any prompting, we're probably missing some people, so we'll figure out a way to, to kind of get the word out that way as well. And then on the, the first part there, we've been, we've been trying to get the police department in here to do some type of training on emergency situations, active shooters, any, any type of emergency like that. Just because we're such an open public building, people come and go all the time, and Chief Landis, he's putting us in touch with, his official title, the school officer. And hopefully, we can get some kind of training set up. And I'd also like to get just like a policy or plan in place if something were to ever happen as to how we get people out of the building, where we should go. It's, it's nice to have something like that because in the rare chance that something actually happens, and so we have, we have something in place that, that will help guide our actions. Are there any comments or questions? If not, I'll go ahead and submit it to them for people.
It looks great, yeah.
And then next we have the borrowing policy. So we do already have some public service policies in our policy binder, but we don't have anything specific to this that states, you know, what people need to check out, you know, what, what they need to renew and telephone requests. We were doing some things over the pandemic that we wouldn't normally have done, you know, providing people's card numbers over the phone, for example, because they couldn't physically be in here. But I think the time for that is, is ended because, you know, obviously, we are open. And obviously, we're getting a lot of people from Agawam and a lot of people from other towns that, you know, there's a lot of people coming in here that we don't recognize, and we can recognize our regular patrons. But I think this is just a good way to kind of reiterate it, get it down on paper. You know, just, I did work, the last library I worked at, we, we were happy to look people up by name. Everybody knew everybody, but this is a much bigger town, and it's getting bigger, and we're getting new patrons. And so I think we really need to be careful of, you know, not that anybody ever lies and says, I'm so-and-so, check these books out, and like, or disappear, you never hear from them again. But, you know, just so we have this written down, so if a patron were to ever say, why did you do this? We have it here so that we can always rely on it. So yeah, we, we say, you know, we're not going to, you know, we're not giving card numbers over the phone anymore. I don't think that's needed now that the pandemic is over, now that we're open. And yeah, we were issuing temporary cards to patrons during the pandemic so that, you know, they could, they, if we were closed, we'd sign them up for a card from a distance and give them a temporary card so that they could go online and get new books and everything. But I don't, I don't see this for them anymore. So. Yeah, I thought it was just a good idea to have everything down here. If anybody were to ever question it, you know, we have our policy that's been approved, and, and I think even, you know, compared to some other libraries, it's still pretty flexible. Like if you forget your card, we can take a license, if everybody has a license or some.
Quite something, yeah. Make a motion to accept the borrower's policy as presented to us tonight?
Tammy, second.
All those in favor? Michael McMahon, yes.
Hi.
Cindy Warner, yes. Tracy Meswier, yes.
Tammy Sykes Fassilla, yes.
It was unanimous.
Okay, and then the last thing is a fun thing from Molly. So we took down some stuff from the children's room. If you walked in, we had a big postal wall, was, we had a lot of farm trees hanging up there that didn't really fit in with the children's room. So we took those down, and the Historical Society was very happy to have them. I loaded up and loaded them up into Pat O'Dea's car one day, and she, she carted them off. So Molly wanted to propose potentially doing a mural of something in the children's room. And she just gave a couple samples, I mean, it's. And she just gave a couple samples. I mean, if I think it's set in stone as far as the ideas yet, but she just wanted to, to throw the idea out there. So that if it's something that you guys wanna do.
I know the last one. I love that one.
Yep.
So yeah, basically what she wants to do is, um, she wants to find a local artist, um, and have them come up with a proposal. And then we could bring that proposal to the board to, for final approval. And then, um, you know, I.
You see artist that did the, uh, exercise room at the senior center? That's too jarring for anybody.
I know, I'm kinda curious what it is.
I gotta go stand now.
You know, it's off the main meeting room with the.
I'll, I'll be over there tomorrow to drop off our owl. I'll have to take.
Yeah, when you go in the door of the senior center, the kitchen is on your right and the cafeteria, okay? So this is going to be to your left and sort of around the corner.
Okay.
It's, yeah.
That's why we did.
My only recommendation is to hire that artist.
Yeah, so, so Molly will try to find a local artist for it. Um, so if, if you guys are in approval, what we could do is I could give her the okay to try to track down an artist. Um, we can have the artist do a sketch. And then we could talk.
You might check with Pat McMahon about, with all the artists that have been involved in the art show. I'm sure you'll come up with someone with.
Oh, she, she could give you all these local artists.
Yeah.
Captain?
Also, don't forget the deadline is coming up for cultural past work applications.
Yeah, we, we've got all of our, I think everything is a hundred percent in, so.
The deadlines, October fifteenth.
Fifteenth, right.
So we've got everything submitted for that.
Yeah, that would be.
The one that I sent out.
That's a good idea. Tammy came up with a good idea.
Yeah, they got you. Large numbers, okay.
If you decide to have like a couple people like submit like artwork or whatever, you know, with ideas.
Pictures and then like the kids could vote on.
And then they feel like it's part of their library, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and then I mean, I guess that way, you know, she could put out a call and have different people send it in by a deadline and then, yeah. And then I think the only thing we have to figure out is just, you know, pricing, probably, I mean, we definitely pay for the materials for the person and and then probably in the summertime, so we could air out the space, but. Yeah, so if everybody's in approval, I'll let Molly know that she can, can get going on that.
Yes.
And then that was, that was the last thing I had.
So you don't need, need any more candy for Halloween?
I, I think we're good at the moment. I still got quite a bit that I haven't bagged up yet. So, yeah, I think we're, I think we're good.
Did you get it from the friends?
Uh, no, no, if we need more, the friends said they would.
Okay, well, I didn't know. What, what happened last month at the friends meeting? I wasn't there, but some did.
You should have had, actually, took from.
Yes, yes, Tracy gave us lots. We've got plenty. We've got plenty. Um, yeah, and then Tammy held up the, the friends are doing a fundraiser, fundraiser to sell tea. They have more out there.
Okay.
Yeah, there, there's a table out in the lobby that you can take the order form and whatnot.
Let's do some popcorn for the Molly Ball day.
So this sounds good.
There's nothing else. I mean, let somebody motion to adjutant. Backed in by Maria.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.